Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to read a brief statement about how we're going to conduct our meetings and what the public can look forward to in terms of engaging with us. So just for a few moments, please. We miss the connectedness of being live, however, we have the health of everyone to consider during this pandemic and are working within the confines of the pandemic and open meeting laws. In the meantime, we are taking precautions for exposure within our buildings to others and for Board of Education members themselves. We are always available via phone or email, and visitor speaking opportunities will expand in phases. The instructions will be on our Board of Education webpage on the district website. For Phase 1, interested people can request a three-minute time slot, just as we had done in the past, and receive a Zoom link from Board Clerk Cynthia Cushman, and we will remain on Zoom for Phase 1. Phase 2 will move us, the Board of Education, to being live either at Schrader or at Spry, location to be determined, and will still continue to receive speakers through Zoom. And then Phase 3, we'll all look forward to being live and in person again when it is safe to do so. So thanks, everyone, for your patience, and as always, we're accessible the same ways that we always have been and look forward to being fully live and in public the way we used to be. So thank you for that. And now, moving on, you know that Carmen is en route to his home and probably won't need to amend the agenda. But in the meantime, we're very much looking forward to today's instructional report on equity and diversity from Terry McCarthy and Lucy Campfey. So if you two would, please take it away.
Great. Well, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to share a little bit of the work that we have been doing as a system, both personally, there's lots of personal work that we're doing, and then some bigger, broader pieces as it relates to these very, very important efforts. And let me just pull up the presentation. And we do want to start first, of course, by recognizing the leadership that the school board has provided us and that Mr. Gomina has provided us. We have had incredible support from our school board and from our senior leadership in the district, and that means a ton, because this is important work, and our staff needs to know that they have full support. And so we really appreciate the role the board and Mr. Gomina has taken in this important work. And so we do want to start by talking about One Webster. And I think I've shared this slide a couple times as we've worked around these issues with the board. And for me, when we think about One Webster, I really look at, I've mentioned two, and I think there's a third thing that really comes out. The One Webster, to me, really thinks, really tells me that as a child, as a person, Webster, we could be our own one. I can be myself, I can be proud of who I am, I can come into a space with my history to be proud of, my background, my personality, whatever it might be, I can be myself. But then also, I can see myself, the second part is seeing myself in that one. So that one is encompassing of all of us in the One Webster. And then lastly, one of the things I've been really thinking about and adding here is we also need to stand united and come together, united as One Webster, as we work through these difficult and challenging issues that face this country and, quite frankly, face the world, but on a local level that certainly affects our community. And so I had a quote on there by Dr. King, and I think we think about these difficult times that we're in, these moments of discomfort, and this is when we learn the most, and this is when we grow the most, and I feel that way for our system, and I feel that way personally and I think for us, our staff. And we do want to share, we started, we shared these four agreements for Courageous Conversation with you all last year, and that is an anchor to our work here in Webster, staying engaged, speaking your truth, experiencing discomfort, and then that third one, excuse me, the fourth one, expecting and accepting non-closure. For many of us, we are type A doer personalities, and we expect to have things wrapped up. And these conversations and this work will not end in a 40-minute block. Like, I'm trained as a teacher, and I'm used to closing a lesson in 40 minutes and then being rewarded for that professionally. This work doesn't end in 40 minutes. This work is, it takes a long time, we have to be in it for the long haul. And so it's just a great reminder, certainly for me and I think for everyone, as we continue working through this. And so last year at our board workshop, which is hard to believe, it was a year ago already, we were in the library conference room at Schrader, and we went through an activity that close to 200 Webster constituents have gone through, students, staff, administrators, parents through the fire group, and of course, board members. And Lucy and I presented a very simple proposition, which is to put ourselves 10 years ahead. So at the time, it was 2019. So in 2020, what would Webster look like? Really creating a vision for this community around equity and diversity. And we have since calculated and tabulated all of the responses. So we had, as I said, close to 200 participants from a wide variety of backgrounds and experiences and ages, and nearly 35 different groups who developed their vision for Webster. And what we found was, even though there's great difference among the participants in this activity over the course of really a year, we found some very interesting commonalities. And I'll just give us a minute to look at these bullet points. And so what our community has told us, what our staff and students, and what the stake we have set for ourselves is around that we are, to our core, equity-oriented, that reflexively, we're thinking about how are we including and supporting diverse cultures and people of diverse and different backgrounds as they come into our One Webster, so that they can be the one, so that they can see themselves in the one, and so that we can stand as one, that our curriculum, that our students see their story, they see their faces, they realize that they have a richness to be proud of in our culture and in our curriculum, that we look seriously at disproportionality, particularly as it relates to opportunity. And you've often heard the achievement gap, and I would like to push on that, and others have for sure, and it's more about an opportunity gap than it is an achievement gap. And then lastly, as a system, we have ongoing reflection and learning. And so this has really been an informative process, and really, for us, for Lucy and I, as we have helped to shape this work, and certainly, we're in the background, the work being done by our teachers and staff and community is really what we want to highlight tonight. Really, the first few years of this work has been around creating that vision. What do we believe in as a community? And then last year, we did a number of events, and so you may have recalled the Hispanic Heritage Celebration that we had at the Willink Cafeteria, where we had close to 300 people, a salsa band, we had salsa and bamba dancing, cinco con swing, and it was a wonderful celebration of our community. We had assemblies during African-American Black History Month that had Afro-Caribbean dancing, assemblies in all of our K5 buildings. And then we had also planned Garth Fagan Dance Company to come to our Community Arts Day. And so we had some really awesome events, also coupled with some professional learning and growing. And so this year, and Lucy will talk about, as we transition from events, particularly knowing we can't do as many with COVID, to our learning and what it is that we have been learning about and how we hope to shape our system moving forward. And I will turn it over to Lucy.
Evening, everyone. So this quote, "Be like the bamboo, the higher you grow, the deeper you bow," I think Terry and I can say, especially over the last year, that we have continued to grow tremendously as individuals, but also with the people that we have worked with. So our ongoing diversity work, we do have our fire group with our families, and for those that may not know, it's Families Igniting Racial Equity. And a lot of the things that Terry just mentioned, those events, were led by our families. You know, like Terry said, we were in the background, our families were the ones that did a lot of that with the support from our staff and our buildings. But I think that's super important, that they did a lot of that work. The steering committee of the fire group, one thing that we reflected on as a group was, we needed a little bit more support with having these courageous conversations. And so we reached out to the Gandhi Institute, and the steering committee worked with Kit from the Gandhi Institute for some training to work through those, to be able to be better facilitators of those conversations. And Terry, I'm going to jump back to you for just a second to talk about the restorative practice, where we are with that with the district.
Yeah, so we really started, and by "we," I mean a group through, led by Colin Armstrong and Student Services, and restorative practices. I believe the board has heard some presentations about that work, but it really was about starting to build internal capacity, particularly at the secondary level, and the core of restorative practice is community building. And so we did a number of trainings, really intensive three-day trainings with a partner called Puri, a local agency. And our long-term goal is to really have that at the core of what we do, and that it is about, first of all, building that community, and then, second of all, being able to create a space where if challenges do arise, we can be ready to restore those relationships. And so this has been ongoing work, and we're still in our capacity building as a system, and we're hoping that once we move through some of this COVID stuff, that we will really be able to expand this and bring more teachers into the fold on this work.
Thanks, Terry. The other piece we're working on, or one of the other pieces, is developing a common approach to when we have incidents with our students around bias, hatred, and racism, but that we're more consistent with that, and we've worked with mainly our secondary folks on this right now, but it will trickle down to our elementary people. And then we've also developed our Equity and Diversity page, and that's thanks to our Public Relations people in the district, thank you for helping us with that, and that's continuing to grow as well. This quote from Sonia Sotomayor, this just like really hit with me for our summer work that we did with teachers, and that quote is, "It's important for all of us to appreciate where we came, come from, and how that history has really shaped us in ways that we might not understand." So over the summer, Terry and I worked with about 120 teachers, and we had these four cohorts, and you can see on the slide that these were the focus topics of each of these cohorts. And the way this was structured in the summer was, they were for two weeks. The first Monday, we had a kickoff. The second Monday, we kind of did a check-in, and the third Monday was a closing. And for each of these cohorts, they had a learning menu. And those cohort, the learning menu started with a lot of reflection and a lot of, around many different things. And we also asked our participants to keep a journal, and the only people that saw it were Terry and I, and I think Terry and I said it many, many times, not only the power of what everybody wrote, but it was paragraphs. It wasn't just a sentence, it was paragraphs of reflection and learning. And to kind of go back to the quote that we just said, I think we heard so much this summer about what they learned as individuals and how they looked at their own personal experiences through different lenses. And it was incredibly powerful. I think that middle Monday of each cohort, I know I was pretty emotional on those Mondays. And one of the other things that we did for each cohort, there was kind of a final reflection piece. So Cohort A, they had to create like a three-word statement to reflect their learning. Cohort B was to create a found poem. Cohort C was to create a bumper sticker, which you see some examples here, and this was all to summarize their learning. And the fourth cohort, they could choose what they want, and each of those were as powerful as the learning. But I think the conversations that we had and the insight that our staff members and the teachers shared was pretty incredible. So, but lots of learning this summer and lots of reflection, and I would say a lot of growth on the part of our staff, and I know for Terry and I as well. Other work that's continued to go on around the professional learning, we did it too out, our learning experience this summer with just the district leadership folks, again, focused on the diversity work, sharing also the work that we did with the teachers in the summer. The next bullet here about this one-hour learning for all teachers, so all teachers and those superintendent days before school started were asked to complete a one-hour online learning through the Teaching Tolerance website, and it was focused on the social justice standards. And our first one that they worked on was looking specifically at diversity, and that was asked for all teachers to work through K-12. And Terry and I have also began to work with our different groups of folks, like our bus drivers, our cafeteria staff, to also start providing them with experiences. I'm going to touch a little bit on the next one, but then I'm going to turn it back to Terry, because he's got much more insight on these last two bullets. We just completed last week some initial training for teachers who would like to pilot this curriculum through Pasco Foundation. And again, pretty powerful curriculum, and the power of this is also that it's focused on Rochester, and Shane Wiegand, who was a Webster grad, is the person that is helping to facilitate the writing of this, but pretty powerful stuff, and we have a good group of teachers ready to pilot that. But I'm going to turn it back to Terry, because he's got a little more insight on these next two bullets. So thank you.
Great, thanks, Lucy. Yeah, the work done by Shane really has really started innocently from an interaction that he had with one of his fourth-grade students, he's a fourth-grade teacher at Russian Rieta 10 years ago, who, he was talking about racism, Shane was talking about racism in the US, and one of his students asked him, was there racism ever in Rochester? And so as a class, they ended up researching, and Shane has since become one of the foremost experts in the Rochester area around Rochester's history of redlining and racially restrictive covenants. And so the work for this project has some pilot lessons for a number of teachers in fourth, fifth, eighth, and 12th grade. And so the idea is to expose students to primary sources, it's all sourced from the Rochester Democrat Chronicle, the other local papers, sourced from public documents. And then students are engaging in an inquiry process to explore what this means, and then also there are community-building circles for students to be able to process through these very difficult things. And part of that community building, which is why it's so important, is for our kids, as adults, we don't do a very good job of modeling what it means to talk about these difficult topics related to race and racism and systemic racism. And so it's really about how do we create that space, and how do we help kids, in a way, engage in this in ways that maybe their adult role models often don't? And so that's really been the emphasis for that and the impetus for that work. And really, some amazing conversations have come out of this for our students and for our teachers, and that's going to be a work in progress over the next couple of months. And then we also are participants, and one of the charter members, I guess you'd say, of the Regional Equity Network, or RAN, and Lucy had mentioned a regional leadership summit that Webster hosts last February at our Webster Town Library. We had close to 50 educational leaders from across Monroe County, and that really led us to, really, Grease was working on an idea of a long-term product or project of bringing educational leaders and community leaders together to work through these very important issues that don't stop at our school borders, that have confounded this area in many ways, are related to redlining. So it's interesting how that connection ties in. And so that network will continue to grow, it's primarily focused around superintendents, but Webster, I happen to serve on the steering committee, and I'm honored to be part of the work with Grease, we're also looking at doing some other projects with Grease, and so we're excited, I'm sure we'll have more information to share about that in the coming years. And so I would be remiss, we are halfway through Hispanic Heritage Month, and so I want to just bring attention, obviously, we can't do a Cinco Con Swing concert again this year, unfortunately, but we are going to be sharing some virtual activities, both regionally, nationally, and then we're working on developing some local activities just for Webster students and families. It'll be very family-friendly and very family-oriented. So I would encourage you, we have the website down at the bottom, that is our Hispanic Heritage website, and a shout-out to Linda Law, who's an English teacher, who's done an amazing job with our social media, and Maria Cortez, who is one of our fire committee members, steering committee members, who is the chair of the Hispanic Heritage Committee, and helping to put all of this together. And so I think it's appropriate, we end with Ruby Bridges. And I'm excited where Webster is going and down that path, and it's a new path for us, but I'm confident with the support of this Board of Education with Mr. Gomina and with this incredible community that we have, this One Webster community, that really, we are positioned to do some incredible work on behalf of all of our students and their families in the coming years. So with that, we'll end our formal presentation, and we would love to hear any questions that the board would like to share.
I have a question, I actually have two, if that's okay. Are the lessons that were used during the superintendent's days before school started available still, or were they live?
Yeah, they are asynchronous, so they're...
Oh, right, right.
Yep, yep. So it's about an hour, and there's some audio and some video, and there's some readings, so I can get that link to if you're interested.
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see them.
They're also right on the Teaching Tolerance website, but we'll get those to you.
Oh, it's okay, then I can go to that.
The Teaching Tolerance website has great resources.
Okay. And is Webster using Shane's lessons yet? Is anyone using them?
Yes, some teachers have, and the conversations that our students are engaging in have been fantastic. And I'll just share a quick anecdote, we had students from two very, engage in a really difficult conversation, but in a way that was, because they built that community, they were able to have this conversation, one whose family member was a police officer, and another whose family member had had some negative interactions with the police, and really being able to say, let's talk about this, right, in a way that we should be talking about it. And so that's been amazing. So yeah, we're starting to see that, and then they'll be giving feedback to ultimately craft these lessons more formally for next year.
You know, Maria, go along with you, I think as a board, we should hear what Shane has to say in a workshop. I know he's been asking me a number of times to come and talk to us, it's just, we haven't found the time. I would hope, we should, it's very interesting what he has to say.
I agree, I just think that it'd be great to watch what, you know, be part of the learning that the school district was involved in too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, great, Shane will actually be presenting to our fire group for our October 20th meeting. So if you're, I think the whole board is on our email distribution list, so if you're able to participate there, that would be great.
Terry, Shane said he would come in and talk right to the board.
Yeah, that would be great, too.
Another question I have, Terry, did all teachers take all four of the cohorts, or could they pick and choose?
They could pick and choose, and we had some who were with us like every Monday over the summer, and it was sad, like the last, like the first Monday, when we didn't have it, it was like, oh geez, I kind of miss seeing everybody. But yeah, we had probably five or six that participated in all of them, and then we had a different mix throughout the course of the summer.
Okay, thank you.
Terry, is there a parent component, maybe if parents of students who are starting to take these lessons are interested in learning more, or is there some sort of parent involvement that is available?
That's a great question. Shane does have materials that he has shared, I know he has used it, and he has, he's had some great success, and it's caused some great conversations, and I've had a number of conversations with families. This is some of the words I think people see, and it's a very contentious time, and they get caught up in that, and I understand that. So it's been great to have conversations with parents. Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Terry and Lucy, and I know we're working to expand communicating the work about fire within all the buildings, so we want to set up a communication model, sort of like PTSD, where we're all present and serving a liaison capacity. So in the meantime, we'll make sure that somebody is jumping on meetings and sharing a report until we, the hope would be to grow the base and involve more parents as well. So everything is getting underway, but thank you both very, very much for your work on behalf of the entire district.
Thank you.
So much. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I see Carmen's back home. Would you like to, would you like to add your superintendent report?
Thanks, Dan. Hi, everybody, thanks for your flexibility, as Terry and I were kidnapped tonight, as Tammy had mentioned, and taken out to dinner by our daughters. This is the very first anniversary in 32 years that I haven't had my fall cold, which actually leads into one of the points I'm going to make in my superintendent's report. So first, I want to thank Terry and Lucy for their report and their district-wide leadership, that they are leading us all with the equity and diversity. So thank you, Terry, and thank you, Lucy. So almost... So almost one month of school is complete. We are about to complete our third full week. And just incredibly thankful to the kids and staff for following our health and safety protocols and I am ninety-nine point nine-nine percent sure that this is sustainable and we can get all the way through to June. I am especially grateful to our parents and guardians for working with their children on these health and safety protocols. So, you know, I had started off by saying this is the very first October first in thirty-two years that I haven't had a cold and that I can actually really enjoy an anniversary and a hundred percent physically fit, I guess. And I do think that, you know, the the biggest reason is, you know, we're three and a half weeks in and typically, you know, it is an incubator and I'm around kids and adults for those three and a half weeks and a typical year, I'm getting my first cold. But that's not happening right now, which is awesome, because again, we're we're distant, we're wearing a mask and we're being safe. And and I do think that's going, that it's definitely obviously having an impact on, you know, you know, my anniversary type of thing. But I think it's also going to have an impact on the health, the overall health of of our community. And will help us sustain this model, this hybrid model for, you know, for certainly for the foreseeable future. I also think it's going to help for the flu season. I do hope that people are still thinking about getting that flu vaccine. And the earlier the better. They are recommending that we all get it done now so that we don't have COVID and the flu sort of intermingling. So but again, I think between that flu vaccine as well as the distancing and masking, this may very well have, we may very well have the lowest incidence of flu that we've seen as a community in a long, long time. And I'm saying that based on what's really coming out of New Zealand and Australia, who are just finishing their flu season. And also based on some Rochester data that typically two percent of the of the population will will get the flu in the summer. So but in Rochester, but that is actually, it's now one tenth of that. So what they've seen is only a point two percent flu rate during our summer months. And that again is ten times less than what they typically see. And again, most of that is due to the fact that we're masked and we're distanced. So the science does work. And I also want to thank the parents and the guardians for submitting the daily health screening through Pick My Kids. And I know that for some, Pick My Kids is can be frustrating at times or there are a bunch of screens and and to get through. But if you have any kind of questions or concerns about that app, feel free to reach out to me personally and I will certainly send an expert and have an expert give you a call. Because it is really important that you're not that we're not sending our children to school sick. Part of the wanted to see where my report. So I will be in my Friday thoughts tomorrow. There was, and I know many parents are like, listen, you know, when I send my kid to school with a cold or if I don't send my child to school with a cold, you know, what what I'm being asked to do is to actually take my child then to get a COVID test. Then I got to wait a couple of days for the results and so on and so forth. And we know that's really frustrating. That's not our rule. That actually was the county from the DOH. But there there is actually a wonderful tweak that just happened today in terms of recommendations and guidelines and protocols. And when a when a parent notices that their child, you know, has a runny nose or whatever, whatever it is, they can actually go to their primary care physician and the PCP may actually say, you know what, you don't need, you don't need a COVID test. I I know what this is. This is your typical asthma. This is your typical seasonal allergies. I will write a note. And I, you know, and this note will get you back into school much faster. So that just happened today. We're very pleased to see that. And I think parents will be pleased as well to know that COVID testing can be waived by their primary care. We can't do that, but their primary care physician can certainly do that. And so my last piece here will be over the next two weeks. We will have beginning next week. So next week is a four day week because it leads up to Superintendent's Conference Day on Friday. The week after that is there's a Columbus Day week. So we have Monday off and then it's a four day week. So we want everyone to know that so no kids on a week from tomorrow on Superintendent's Day, which is October ninth. Okay, so send your kids to school tomorrow if you're group two or if you're elementary. But next Friday, it's Superintendent's Day, no school for kids. And remember that on Monday, the twelfth, it's Columbus Day, no school. Now, what's going to happen on those Wednesdays then? Okay, so the next two Wednesdays for secondary kids, they're not going to be your typical virtual days, all right, where they had the mini sessions of their, they met through, you know, all their classes. So on the next two Wednesdays, the students, the secondary students will be coming to school. So next Wednesday, it's a group two day. All right, so the group two kids are going to come to school on Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday. Oh, sorry, there is there is no school on Friday, but whatever. But they'll come to school Tuesday and Wednesday. The week after that, the week of Columbus Day, it's a it's a Wednesday for group one kids to still come to school. All right, we're going to be sending you so many messages. You're going to see it on Facebook and our website. We'll be tweeting it out. You're probably going to get sick of it. But the next two Wednesdays, there will be in-person learning. Next Wednesday is for group two. And the Wednesday after that, after Columbus Day is for group one. Miss Land and Mr. Neenan, did I get that right? Just want to make sure. Right? Okay. And we'll, again, we're going to have all this information up on our website. And that's it for my report. So thank you, Tammy, and thanks, everybody, for their for their flexibility again tonight. Allowing me to zoom in for the first few minutes from my car. But it was becoming a distraction, so I had to turn it off. So it'd be safe. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Carmen. Okay, moving along to new business, we have New York State School Board Association Conference coming up, which we are not attending. However, we can participate in the business meeting portion of the conference. And Sue has offered to be our delegate. And what is what occurs is voting on the proposed resolutions. So we've had a little bit of email conversations back and forth between between a couple of us. But we want to open it up for conversation and clarifying questions and then Sue will be the one to take our responses and represent us virtually at the meeting. So thank you, Sue. Does anybody have anything that they aren't sure about about the proposed resolutions? The ones that are recommended, I believe we are in favor of and support. And the ones that are not recommended, I also believe that we agree with that recommendation as well. So if anybody has anything to say, please jump in.
I think the only one that I just wanted to mention was number six. We went back and forth a little bit. I know remote learning is obviously here for a little while and it makes sense. And there are some aspects of it that can lead to some collaboration and offering some special courses. But I just want to make sure that only when it's discussed, you know, that we're just cautious of too much remote. We don't ever want to replace teachers. We don't ever want to force our students into too much remote learning and too much technology. There's a lot to be said for what happens inside the walls of the classroom. And again, with so much isolation over the last six months, the importance of, you know, the mental health and mental well-being and social emotional of the kids. So there are some positive aspects. I would just love to see maybe some clarification on where they're going with some of the extra remote was all.
Yet Sue may be able to learn more at the meeting, but I I do believe this is addressing the digital divide. So not being a rural district and having the benefit of of the technology and one-to-one that we've had, we haven't felt some of the disruption in bandwidth issues and technology issues that some other districts are. So it's my feeling that that is the crux of what this amendment is is trying to address. So maybe Sue. I believe the deadline is passed to ask questions, but I'm sure you can still learn more.
Well, there's a discussion on a regional discussion on Saturday. And then when all of the each each resolution is is addressed in the business meeting individually. So there will be discussion around that. But in any of the rationale listed, it doesn't mention anything about replacing teachers, anything like that. It's really just about expanding opportunities for people who don't have them right now. Specifically, in the past, they've talked about some of the smaller rural districts, you know, the inability for them to even find a part-time physics teacher. So how can you, you know, have a child who lives in a rural area take physics while online would make sense? It's those kinds of things that I think they're looking at.
Right, hopefully.
It did not mention any other, any anything else about reimagining education.
No, it didn't. Yeah, I just, in further clarification, I'd just be interested to see what some of their other examples are or maybe some K-five examples would be interesting.
You know, I don't think that it was written in a way there would that there would be specifics. It would just be making it for easier for districts to implement some of those implement and collaborate with other districts so that their students could have more opportunities. Okay.
So, yeah. A broader question. There's nineteen resolutions they want to pass. That's this year. I don't know how many they passed last year. I mean, what do they do with all these? Just as an example, number two, that NISBA will support legislation that makes it easier for districts to recover attorney fees and legal cases. So what are they really going to do? Are they going to give money to New York State senators and assemblymen? Assemblywoman? What are they going to do? What is, if if we don't approve any of these or approve, what difference does it make? I'm sorry, but just.
So how how it works is every year, resolutions are put in by individual districts as well as by the Board of Directors. And then they're voted on and then the the association's job is to do what they can to move forward with these things. The amount of lobby power that NISBA has is relatively small. There's not a huge, I mean, there are lobbyists, but there's not a significant number of them and the pool is really or the advantage really is in relationships and informing our representatives and the people in Albany about how they can make you know, how they can make education better and easier. So every year, you know, they might adopt twenty-ish and then they stay in the queue for five years. And then if they want to renew them, then somebody will re re-put that, you know, put that back into the resolution and then it would have to be voted on again. So there could be eighty in the hopper at any given time. I suspect, I mean, I don't know exactly how they work, but I suspect they group them together and they meet regularly with representatives and people who work in the state and just keep pushing slowly and slowly and slowly, slowly. I mean, some of them, like you you see, could be easily grouped together. And then they're always looking for opportunities to jump in and advocate, you know, when certain conversations are being had. If that makes sense.
I just, you know, eighty eighty imperatives to work on is about seventy-five too many.
Yeah, you you could say that. I I think it's not on the scale of, you know, having a a group with one mandate that they're going for, you know, and that's all they do. I mean, this is just education as a whole. And, you know, how how we, how can we make some of these things happen? I'd say annually, maybe you get lucky on one. Maybe. From what I've seen.
Okay, look, I just I just waved my two cents in. I don't
Yep.
Whether we vote for all nineteen or or none, I don't think it makes much of a difference in having an impact on what we do in Webster or the schools across the state. I just don't think organizations like this, when they're spread so thin like this, are going to get much done. As you said, they only get maybe one done a year.
Sometimes it's a biggie, though. Keep plowing away.
I'd much rather support Monroe County as as we discussed.
Well, I think something came out today in our, what do we pay? About five thousand dollars to be members? Yeah. Yeah. Monroe County cannot lobby. It's a different type of organization and we're advocates but not lobbyists.
Right, but we can still engage our local representatives.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay, I said my piece.
Yep, no, I I I hear you. So I'm basically going to go with with the recommendations unless there's compelling conversation and rationale for changing. Okay.
Thank you, Sue, for doing that on our behalf.
Sure.
Okay, moving on. During our retreat over the summer, we talked about our our board goals and discussed our goals that we had for last year and all the criteria and examples for how we believe that we met them. And for this, this summary is the district goals. And I won't read them. Everybody can read them for yourself. So I I won't read that out loud. But I will add our internal goals or our own board goals were increased communication, increased interaction and increased visibility. And so we're working with Larry Wall to have a conversation about what that looks like during COVID. The the communication is a bit easier and we're working to expand our presence on the website with Joe Madamaro and Jen Callis and Krista Gross and the communications team. There will be an abundance of information that we can share in that way. We have submitted staff newsletters for the past year and since the beginning of COVID, we've had board communications and they are archived. If anyone wanted to search for anything, but we will keep continuing to do that because as we drive people to the district website and our page in particular, we want that to be the spot where people look to find out more if they've got questions. We'll also have a a Google form which will serve as kind of a an email box, if you will, that anyone could fill out with their questions or suggestions or concerns and it would be received by all of us. So now that the kids are in school, our students are in school and everyone's energies and attention was toward that, which is absolutely as it should be. So now there's a little bit more flexibility for us to move forward with some of these other initiatives that we feel are very important. Interaction, we have a a chart of all eleven PTSAs and I think we've gotten through round one. And one of us or more has been at each building PTSA meeting. Will also continue to attend fire and the subcommittee meetings. And Linda is our representative to when and has attended those meetings for years. So visibility is probably maybe the goal that that we'll have to work harder. We'll just have to work harder at how we're going to achieve that. So having said that, does anybody have any questions or anything to add around this conversation? Please feel free to jump in.
No, that captures what we what we discussed.
Yep, okay. Okay, so we look forward to continuing. It's it's something that's very important to all of us, I know, to be able to maintain the connectedness that will be a little bit of a challenge this year. So thank you for that. And now moving on to board reports, our school liaison reports. We are looking forward to a WTA We are looking forward to a WTA liaison. I'm not sure if Joan Bardanis is going to serve in that capacity again. But student liaisons as well. So now that people are a little bit more settled in a routine, hopefully by our next meeting, November fifth, we can have some voices to fill those positions for us. But school liaison reports, I know I'm going to look at everybody in a different order. But does anybody want to start with a PTSA update from a, a building meeting they attended?
I, I can, Tammy.
Hey, Mike.
I'll do a bunch. Clem North is having their virtual meeting tonight as you speak. So I, I, I'm not there and I can't give a report. But I did go to Schrader PTSA and we, we thank the PTSA for decorating the entrance, entranceway and the courtyard of their buildings. And as Carmen mentioned, parents were reminded that there will be no school on Friday, October ninth and Monday, October 12th. And it was explained to them what will happen. So there's, you know, a change in schedules. And there was discussion about fundraisers and memberships. And this is a good time to remind, if you haven't joined the PTSA, here's your chance. It, it's, you, there are many benefits to being on the PTSA. And one of them is all the reduced prices you can get at merchants. We heard a report from each of the chairpersons and banners are being hung in the geotech hallway. And new gardens are being added by the bus in the main entrance. And the budget and the executive committee were voted on. And the next meeting will be in November and details will be forthcoming. I also went to the Willing PTSA meeting. And again, we thank the PTSA for decorating the entrance way to the buildings. And at Willing, the PTSA again was done virtually. And we heard that the parent drop-offs and the pickups, they, they seem to be working there at the building. We heard about the membership and the spirit wear and the book fair. And Mr. Powers, who was the principal, he answered any questions that the parents had. And he reminded the parents once again about the change in the schedule, which is coming up on Friday and, and Monday. And again, just like at Schrader, the PTSA voted on their budget and their executive team. And the community was invited to join FIRE, which we heard about previously. And again, if you don't know, forgot about it, contact Terry McCarthy at our website for more information. And the Willing PTSA next meeting will be held in November and it'll be virtual. So that's what, what I have to report.
Thank you, Mike. Who's up next?
I mean, I'll go.
Okay, Mike.
Plank Road North. So they started with accolades around how well the planning went in the start of school. It was just, as they said, phenomenal. It worked out well with the parents dropping them off. They still are working out some of the details, but getting the kids into school, getting them on the buses to go home. And then the next group coming in, it's going great. And we got a lot of feedback from the parents that they are so excited that their children are back in school, but the kids are really excited too. And I asked one of the teachers how they're doing with the gap in, are they coming in ready to learn and getting caught up? And they said the kids have such a positive attitude, it is great. They actually got their pictures done the first week and the morning show continues at Plank Road North. And they're doing lots of pictures of the kids, particularly so parents and grandparents can see their children. So that's going well. The only opportunity I would say that I heard was that for the elementary students, the two hours either if they're afternoon in school, the two hours before, that's kind of done remote and the two hours for the other group in the afternoon could use a little more structure. One of the teachers said they're just working on getting everything going in class and they're working on improving that part. And then the last part, which I thought was really interesting is normally we get about twelve or fourteen people in person. There were thirty-five people who participated via the Zoom call. So you're getting a lot more parents engaged. So overall, we're off to a great start and Carmen team, well done. All the planning is paying off. Everybody's happy right now.
Excellent, thank you, Mike.
I'm happy to go.
Okay.
Um, they had a Lego PTSA meeting a couple of weeks ago. It was well-attended as well. The transition is going very well from, you know, from summer to school. Everyone seems to be happy, everyone's working hard. Generally, they have a, well, in the past, I should say, they've had a Patriot Party the first week or maybe, maybe the first Friday of school. And obviously they couldn't have that this year, so they had a, a kindness rock sharing parade or Patriot Parade. And so everyone made really nice rocks and painted them for the courtyard. And they were also given ice cream from PTSA and they, and they decorated their cars. So it was a really nice beginning of school event. And there were ninety-three participants, ninety-three cars. It was astounding to me. So everything's going well and everyone's happy. So, well, I shouldn't say everyone's happy. As far as I know, everyone's happy. No one's complaining. So we're all set and the next meeting is November tenth.
I can go next if you like.
Thanks, Sue. Please do, Maria.
They, at DeWitt PTSA, that everyone was raving about the opening of school, the smoothness of it. And the principal said the kids were coming in energized and really focused. PTSA is encouraging families to join the Webster, the, the, the PTSA. Information can be found on the website. You do get, as Mike said, card with discounts at local businesses. This year, DeWitt PTSA provided basic supplies to every student as a welcome back gesture. And it was made possible by the parent's support and help with last year's fundraiser. Educationally, the DeWitt Road staff are teaching new lessons in, about care to students that were written and created by a team of DeWitt Road teachers to help the kids know what is expected and how to show care throughout their time in the school day each, each day. The five new lessons are in, are care at DeWitt, care for health and hygiene, care in the hallway, on the bus and in the restroom. Staff are also going to be focusing on helping students with technology in order to become independent using their Chromebooks or iPads. And the staff at DeWitt would like to thank their families for the support and help with masks and social distancing. The students have been demonstrating their care at DeWitt and care for health and hygiene by responsibly wearing their mask and social distancing. Next meeting is this coming Monday at six o'clock at DeWitt. Well, it's virtual. That's it.
Sorry, I got tongue.
Maria. Linda?
I can go. Plank South's meeting was a couple of weeks ago and I happened to attend that, their next meeting on October fourteenth. They were saying that their drop-off and pickup were a little bit sketchy for a couple, couple of days there just with so much traffic. But the wonderful thing is the weather's been so great that so many families were walking. And the kids were really loving that. So we're hoping, they were hoping that the weather will continue so that the kids could, could walk to and from school with their families. And a lot of scootering too. And they were very appreciative to the sentries that came over and kind of tweaked the, the parking situation or the drop-off situation. So that was going very well. They have their first virtual event on Friday and it's bingo for books. So they had a number of people signed up and it'll be all virtual. So looking forward to that. I was at Schrader with Mike and I'll tell you, Mike and I have been going to Schrader for, for a number of years. And they had fifteen members there and that's probably the most I've ever seen ever. That, like Mike said, it was a great, great meeting. And I'd also like to just thank Kayden Murphy, who worked on his Eagle Scout project. And that was building the picnic tables for the courtyard. The students are able to go out there for lunch. They're socially distanced, but it really makes a difference. They're able to be outside for lunch and, and talk and hang out with some of their friends. And last night, Janice, I almost texted you, but I figured you were busy with your son, not feeling well. I got a message that Spry had a meeting. It ended up, it wasn't well advertised. And so the, Kim had texted me right when it had started. And they also had some computer glitches, but their first meeting was last night. There were only three or four, I think there were four families there. But very, very upbeat. They are, their theme is flexibility because of just everything being so new and different. And they are all in this together. They are, they are working through and enjoying the beginning of school, the, the new cafeteria anxiously awaiting for the library. They are trying to have a back-to-action week and a Spry Pride Week. And that'll be the week of the eighth and that'll be some, some different events for the kids. And Red Ribbon Week will be ten, October twenty-third to the thirty-first. Their next meeting won't be until November. And that's it. So I wasn't entirely losing my mind. There was. There was shit. They had apologized and said it was poorly advertised. And then there was a glitch with the Google or the, yeah, the Google Meet. And so they had to, to send out a new one. So a lot of people didn't get it. So that's why it was pretended. So, but she promised she would email or text us in advance of them for November. Perfect. Tammy and I did Clem South and State Road. So if I miss anything, Tammy, let me know. For Clem South, I had written down that they were able to purchase thirty-five outdoor camping stools to help with some of their outdoor PE and whatnot. So that was pretty cool. And they spent a lot of time focusing on some fall events and really including as many virtual families as possible. So obviously keeping the distance and, and masking and whatnot. But they really came up with a whole bunch of different ideas in how to keep the school spirit together with all the kids that are in school and with the families that are all virtual from paint nights to fun runs and virtual bingos and things. So it sounded like they had a really good set of options to include everyone and just kind of keep that camaraderie going. And then State Road, Leo's pies seem to still be popular for both of them, which sounds good because I guess they're really big fundraisers and moneymakers. And they had some good ideas on how to use that this year. And same thing, including as many families as possible, both in school and virtual. They too were focusing on Red Ribbon Week and how to incorporate, you know, again, hybrid and remote with obviously no ribbons as touching and sharing and whatnot isn't going to happen this year. So they had some good ideas about Red Ribbon Week and still incorporating a Spirit Week and some spirit themes. And same thing, book fair is online and spirit wear. Which I know Plank South is getting ready to do too, because I've been trying to get a couple of options in place for them as well. So that's been fun. I don't know, Tammy, if I'm missing anything.
No, no, I think, but what is interesting and we've heard from several people is the number of people in attendance. So for Clem South, there were sixteen people. And that's the most they'd ever had. So they were doing planning around the fifth grade event. So knowing that things are going to look different this year, how can they still do the things that, that matter to the students? They purchased kindergarten, T-shirts for all the kindergartens, kindergarteners as a welcome gift. And then Clem South. Same thing, they're, they're really kind of all in the same boat. We created a Google Doc to help us all keep track of all these meetings because they may change. Not every school has a meeting every month and that's true of Central PTSA as well. And they, Central PTSA also encouraged everyone to think about what the fundraisers were for. Knowing that they probably were going to spend less money, but didn't want to deplete their accounts. So just trying to balance between having things that are engaging and fun for kids and families and growing their membership. So thanks, everybody. Got everywhere. So next is Monroe County School Board Association Steering Committee. We haven't had another meeting since the previous one that I reported on. So Legislative Committee, is there anything new?
No, the next meeting is next Wednesday.
Yeah.
I don't know why I put, oh, and October seventh at noon. So after the meeting last month, I sent you a copy of the legislative report and a summary of the meeting. Is that how you want me to continue reporting? Or do you want me to leave it for this meeting, you know, for a board meeting? How do you want to do it?
Well, if, if you want to share it in a board meeting, then everyone else will get to hear it.
Okay, I can do that.
Sure, thank you. Labor relations, if you had a chance to have another meeting, maybe not.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Lyndon and I heard how HFL is developing and doing emergency response. And they emphasize that the goal for their safety drills should be that the students develop situational awareness and preparedness just to deal with life. Now Webster in the past has participated in a simulated emergency drills. So much of what HFL was reporting was a review for us. But they did raise some interesting questions about situations which we might not have considered. Such as if you have an internet breach, can you do a full password reset for the students at home? Or what happens if a number of your bus drivers have to be quarantined during the school day? This is important stuff to think about because you never know when, when this can happen. So thank you to HFL's Bruce Cappin and Bill Harvey for the presentation. And if you want to see it, you can view it on the Monroe, Monroe County School Board site.
Thanks, Mike. Strategic planning, we are not up and running yet, although I know we're all looking forward to that. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. Information exchange. Reflections on virtual learning was the topic and it was really well done. Representatives from Hilton and West Rondacoyt were there. And they talked about how this year, everyone is moving from compliance to actual learning. So from March till the end of the year, just wanted to make sure that students were engaged, were, were showing up, were doing the work. But now what does actual learning look like? How different is that going to be? And it really centered around the curriculum, consistency of delivery of instruction and continuity, consist, consistency across grade levels as well in between remote and classroom. What they both did that I thought was really interesting is they talked about everything in terms of being a challenge. And then once they met that challenge, it was a celebration. So everything was just another opportunity to be able to conquer an obstacle that was in the way in a way that, that was meaningful for students. So very well attended. Had to have a microphone and a mask across a very large room and box lunches, but I think it went well. And that's what Monroe County will continue to do, to have their meetings in person. And if there is a meal involved, it'll be boxed to go. Okay, so on to our standing district committees. Sue, do you want to talk about the policy webinar?
Actually, I think I said a summary to everyone, didn't I? Okay.
We'll skip over audit though, Tammy, you skipped over audit.
Uh-oh, okay. We are having our first policy meeting on October fifteenth.
Excellent.
Audit is, is on, the first meeting is on, on the seventh of October.
Okay, so yes.
Important committee, Sue.
We'll save that argument for another day. So for strategic pant, planning, Tammy, I reached out to Larry today. And he was suggesting, you know, maybe mid-November and he was gonna reach out to Cindy, hi Cindy, and have her look at some dates and have it not be associated with a board meeting day.
Sounds great. Along those lines, same thing, code of conduct. We received another draft today and have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday as well. So everything's coming together and everyone is up and running and getting back to, once the students are settled, we're getting back to our work, which is great. So when, Linda, did you have anything?
The next meeting is the fourteenth, that's the second Wednesday. So I think that's the fourteenth, but nothing since our last meeting. We haven't had yet, right, Maria?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We did, I, some people attended a webinar on, that it was presented, which was pretty good. It was, they discussed the drug issue and, and how to promote safety with drugs.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, I believe we covered everything. Moving on to our consent agenda. Includes minutes of the September seventeenth meeting, personnel actions and assignments and recommended, recommendations of the committee and special ed. Everyone's had a chance to review all of those items. Can I have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
By Mike, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, motion carries, which brings us to the end. Future board meeting, we have a workshop on October fifteenth and our next live meeting is November fifth, which will also be a Zoom. But we should have our visitor speaking time links available by then and we'll communicate when everyone can find that information on the district webpage. So with that, thank you to everyone who's just working so hard for everything to continue, custodial and maintenance staff especially. We appreciate the efforts of everyone. So can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move.
Mike, second. Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Happy anniversary, her.
Have a good night.